I'm taking a picture of that on air sign. It makes me laugh.
Reminds me of WKRP in Cincinnati.
I know. Okay. Well, it says we're on air. Are we good? Okay, let's go ahead and start tonight's study session. We have two items on the agenda. The first is an update from the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services on the 988 program.
Mr. Jeff Disneys, please.
Please.
Yes. Grab a coffee chair.
Is it okay if I sit down just because I have a knee that's not feeling real good?
Absolutely.
Made worse when I went to the Texas game, sorry.
But it was still worth it, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was worth it. And debate. Actually, I'm not real scripted on anything tonight. When we had been emailing back and forth with Mr. Pyle, and he'd asked a little bit about kind of where we were staffing, but I went ahead and pulled some numbers before we did that because I thought you'd be interested in it. Staffing around what we're doing as far as our mobile outreach and everything. We have part of the positions filled. We're still, still working on filling some additional positions. The adult mobile crisis, though, has started as far as if we had talked about how we were going to kind of softly roll some of that out. Our numbers are running about thirty upwards to forty. I'm going to say closer to thirty because it's still a little sporadic. As far as the calls that we have coming in, that's mobile crisis calls. There are calls coming in that are initiated through law enforcement where they're calling the crisis team. And then we also, that includes some proactive, what I'll call proactive outreach, where we're going into the homeless community in different at-risk populations where we are sending teams in. On the children's side, it's running about thirty to forty crisis calls a week that we're responding to there. That number likely is starting to creep up a little bit. And typically, we see that during the school year because there's more people around an individual, right, to notice things. So we get a lot of calls from schools who are utilizing that line, and so we're responding there. Then our other calls to where we are working with at-risk populations, working on compliance issues, delivering medications, those sort of activities. That's about two hundred, a little over two hundred team responses a month. Some of that is duplicate for individuals who are, have difficulty where in some cases, we might even be going out every day to an individual to make sure that they're, have medications, they have everything that they need, they're stable, remaining stable. And that includes also into a homeless population. That group works there also. So I see this ramping up and expanding out. I was actually at COCMHC a week ago when we were working with area law enforcement and getting iPads out. I found out tonight, and I'll find out why, we apparently were doing something to the iPads for Norman PD, so I want to know what we're waiting on there. So we'll fix that. But the iPads are going out. We have started getting calls in on those. And those are a really simple type of iPad. I really need to bring one so you can see it. It's a little iPad, has two buttons on it, basically, two apps. So one that you can press, an officer can press, and that way, if they engage with somebody in the community, they press this button, and they're able to link up with an individual, lead that individual to a clinician. There's another button on there, which is actually for the officer, for debriefing, for assistance on, you know, advice on various situations, but it's also for their stress and so that we can, can help intervene there. I think you, what else? You had asked about an update on 988?
Yes.
And kind of where we are with that. So there's all paperwork. This is government. And so it's sitting over at OMES right now, waiting to go out. That was our goal, to have it out here in October, so it's still October. And let's hope that gets out really quick. I know that we're getting, getting that RFP, making sure that we're getting it to you also, because you had an interest in that. Now, when that's going out, the 988, also the statewide mobile crisis is going out. And so we'll have, it'll be two separate RFPs.
Madam Mayor, just a question. When we were talking about 988 and an opportunity for council to determine if one of the dispatch stations in the new emergency operations center, currently, we have six dispatched stations downstairs in PD. The new EOC provides for sixteen, if I'm not mistaken, to you, sixteen spaces for dispatchers, so plenty of room to grow. One of those spaces could be, at council's discretion, available to a 988 dispatcher. So, to be determined. But if council decides that's a direction we'd like to go, we'll make sure when the state identifies how that paperwork will go, to say, yeah, we want to be able to station 988 dispatchers in these places, we'll be ready. And the timing is great for us to be able to facilitate that when they're loading phone lines and all the IT part into that emergency operations center. So, that's a thought Jeff can keep in the back of his mind that when that conversation begins, we'll bring that conversation into action for council. Just, we had a meeting of Oklahoma Municipal Management Services, City of Norman hosted, and one of the things they do with a bunch of cities in the room is say, so what's going on in your city that might benefit other cities to know about? And I said, who knows about 988? And nobody knew.
Same thing at OML when I pitched it to the other mayors.
So I forwarded Jeff's contact information to Mr. Steve Whitlock at OMMS and said, you know, let's talk and we'll facilitate how we can share this information and the rollout with other cities. Well, apparently yesterday, they had a meeting with a whole bunch of police chiefs in one room from all over Oklahoma and said, hey, who's up to speed on 988? And they were not up to speed on 988. So, we're going to be able to open a lot of doors and share a bunch of information with a lot of agencies around Oklahoma. So, that's because you guys asked the questions that other people weren't asking.
Yeah, Steve called me twice already today, and I haven't gone back. So, he will have a call in the morning.
Councilmember Hallman.
Yeah, I think we were all surprised when we found out about it a few months ago. I don't think we were expecting the state to really do anything about this, at least in my opinion. And so, and I think that's why the council in recent years has felt compelled to try to do something locally because we did not feel that the state, federal government, any other government entities were doing it. And so it was definitely a surprise, at least to me and I think several others. When we first were made aware of this a few months ago, it was mentioned that July of twenty-two was when it was expected to roll out as far as the number and everything. That's still the trajectory.
That's still there. It's gonna happen naturally that rolls out. The number's actually active right now. We're not using it. We're not promoting that as far as, because it's not going to be answered by anybody right now. But, so by saying that, what I mean is, the hope is, the hope is that we would be ready a little bit before that July date so that we could test bugs and try to make sure that things are working. Everything, all this is a change. So, our transportation, by the end of the month, we will have our transportation, the third-party transit contracts out. And that's gone through a process. There's a provider over, and actually, that's delayed us just a little bit on some things because we've had to make sure that we get that wrapped up. It's a very important piece of all of this as, as we put it in. But we're finalizing contracts, and as soon as we have that information, we'll, we'll be very public about it. And obviously, the cities are going to know who's what. They're still finalizing a few things. But that's going to be a big step forward as we were able to do that. And of course, with everything with the government, there are different processes that we're going through. We have statute to change in a lot of these places where we've had to change that. This is all something, though, that we've been talking about for a number of years. And it's really encouraging to me, just as somebody who lives here, that Norman is so engaged on these types of issues. And so, to the extent that we can, and I think that is, is changing a little bit right now. I know we have a new interim executive director over at Central Oklahoma. I believe she's been, and the team has talked to Darrell a few times, and we're trying to make sure that communication is there. There's a real opportunity to do that so that we can bring these, these issues up and make sure they are getting addressed. And of course, everybody has my contact information, I think, and I'm somebody you can just pick up the phone and call, and I'll be happy to give you information on this. This is very important, not just to the department and being able to work with the communities. For a lot of us, it's very personal, so we want to try to help our communities.
And you had mentioned the transport thing, because there was some concern that state law or some law basically said that law enforcement or police were the only entity that could transport.
That's what it was. And so there were changes that were made in this past legislative session that's, that's allowing for this. So now you'll be able to do third-party within a thirty-mile radius, law enforcement is still, still transporting. So this probably doesn't impact Norman quite as much on, on that. But it will, because law enforcement over the years have been transporting back and forth across the state in different places. And a lot of times, the crisis beds that we've had here, or even in Oklahoma City, have filled up from people coming from other parts of the state, which means that Norman, you end up in the back of a police car and driving out to wherever.
Yeah.
And, and trying to, to find a facility. So, a lot of that was driven by cost, but a lot of it, too, from our perspective, I think from a law enforcement perspective, where a lot of people are really looking at, at cost issues, but also, law enforcement is wanting to make sure people are transported correctly. From us, this is something we've been working on for a long time, because really, what we're talking about are issues that perpetuate stigma. This, it's a disease. It needs to be treated like any other disease. And you don't need to be in the back of a police car. That's not the best place for you when you're going through a behavioral health crisis.
Sure. And you mentioned that there's already service that's
Service is starting.
Active right now.
It's coming up now. The transportation, we're finalizing all the contracts on it. So that will be available after November first. It goes active in November.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Studley.
So forgive me, I, I don't know who you are or where you work for. So, I'm, I'm new. I know I've seen you. I've seen a million people. So can you tell me your name again and who you work for?
Jeff Disneys, Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. I'm Director of Communications.
Okay. And you had mentioned that you guys are currently seeing how many adult calls for mental health?
Right around thirty, thirty to forty, thirty. I'll call it, I'll say thirty.
Per day, per week, per month?
No, 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 no. That's a month. That's a month on crisis calls. You have thirty, about thirty adult crisis calls, about forty youth crisis calls that are coming in in a month, and then there's the two hundred.
And is that here in Cleveland County?
That is. I think on the youth side, there will be probably some McLean in there. It's going to be predominantly here.
But the adults side is here?
Adults, they told me it was Cleveland County number.
And so currently, whenever you guys are getting these calls, are we having police go out with them, or has that changed?
Not always. And so in some cases, no. In some cases, yes. Depends on what the situation is. So the way they work, work it, if, if it's a dangerous situation, then, then yes, you have to have, so whatever that situation might be, if it's a safety issue, then you respond that way. But I would tell you, too, a lot of these calls are actually coming from law enforcement to the crisis team. And so they're engaging in the community. They haven't gone out on a call. Somebody hasn't necessarily called in in a crisis situation. They're finding these situations, and then they're calling the crisis team in to, to help. And so it's a really good partnership.
So right now, that, because you had mentioned the calls are coming in, so right now, it's just through 911, and then they're forwarding that?
Either that, or they're calling directly to Community Mental Health Center.
Okay.
The way we started this was working with people who were engaged in the system. As we started rolling it out, it was easier to work it that way, start working through, through those situations. And a lot of the calls that were coming in, were coming in with people who might have touched the, the system previously.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Okay. So, when you, I'm, I'm really encouraged that we've already got some things in place right now. And so, just to clarify, the things that we're talking about are, I understand, statewide, but this is what is currently happening in Cleveland County.
What I was, what I was looking at was just the Cleveland County crisis numbers and looking what COCMHC is, is responding to.
And so you mentioned that iPads have been distributed. So where have they been distributed in Cleveland County if the Norman Police Department hasn't gotten theirs?
All the law enforcement agencies from Cleveland and McLean.
Okay.
Who else was in? There was another county on that?
County Sheriff's Office?
Yeah, sheriffs have had them. They've gone out. Whatever the situation is here, what we're finding out is something about reconfiguring the tablets so that they work with Wi-Fi or off Wi-Fi.
That's what I'm understanding.
So I'll figure out what it is. We have a contractor who works with us, and so I heard it tonight. I can just call the contractor myself tomorrow.
So, is it safe to say that the agencies within Cleveland County, that NPD is the only one that has not had iPads distributed?
I don't know, because this is the first I've heard. They were over at a, I know Norman PD was at a, a meeting that occurred where they were distributing iPads. So this is the first time I, I heard that they were having to do something to Norman PD. So I don't know. Tonight was it, so we'll find out. I will be able to tell you by tomorrow, though.
Technology, love and hate it all at the same time, right?
I think these, it sounds similar to what we've, we've had in some other areas of the state. We found out, so there's always a learning curve on, on all this, and there's always some sort of little glitch that's going to happen that you have to come back and fix. But in some of the rural areas of the state, the way they were configured, they were having connectivity problems. So that's probably what they're doing there is to make sure that there's no connectivity problem.
So you described this as a soft rollout right now, and the transit piece is coming after November?
November.
Okay. So you've got multiple pieces now, it sounds like, coming online.
Multiple pieces are rolling.
Before the full implementation in July of 2022.
Yeah, in July is the call center. And the call center really changes everything too, once it's up and running, that, that's going to, going to cause changes as we go along and, and figure out how all that is routing. So, but it all goes together as part of a comprehensive plan. So you have the transportation piece, but then you have the call center so you can centralize and, and reach out to these teams. You have mobile crisis so we can respond. All these pieces coming together really is changing the behavioral health system.
Yeah.
In Oklahoma. And there are other states that are doing this also. There's certainly different things going on. This looks like a, to me, it's a, from what I, I see with, with what I look at, this is a very aggressive and very positive effort as far as the state's concerned.
So I guess, I think one of the things that we're challenged with right now is, how do we address the short-term needs that we know exist within our community before the full implementation? So, like I said, I'm encouraged because it sounds like we already have some options, and that our police department in particular has a direct contact within, you said you could make a direct call to the Community Mental Health Center here in Norman. And I'm assuming that if calls come in either to dispatch in non-emergency or emergency context, that our dispatch, dispatchers would also, do they all also have an understanding right now that they can divert?
No, no, about dispatch.
Okay.
I know officers in the field are utilized calling now to the crisis team.
And in regards to, you know, addressing so many needs that we are identifying with our homeless population right now, I'm also wondering if, at what point would all of our COC partners and our agencies also have, have the ability to make a direct call? Or is that something that they can do already?
Hopefully, they're familiar with this already, because our groups meet. But I do, I do think, so some of the, the things that you're bringing up, I think this is all a really good opportunity to really grow that relationship.
Yeah.
And utilize COCMHC to come back and talk about this is what we have, because there are going to be plenty of gaps within the community that come up, and we want to identify how to fill those gaps. Some of that's going to be us. Some of that might be the, the city, and it could be just us working together, find a really good solution. And there's probably some other agencies involved with this, and, and we can help navigate that.
Okay.
Councilmember Hall, there was one piece that we had talked about a while back, and when we met with Jeff and the team for the first big eye-opening exposure to 988 and mobile crisis, Shamika Williams, who established the juvenile crisis program, who's working on the adult rollout with Jeff, a couple of things. We did put, Shamika is hiring the community outreach bodies. So we made sure that Mrs. Verska in our communications office is now plugged in with Shamika and those community outreach folks. So we've got good communications going there. And Shamika shared with us where the juvenile crisis operation happens now is in a house on Gibbs Street on Griffin property.
Yep.
And they're moving into a new facility on Griffin, and their goal is to, on January early-ish, utilize the Gibbs House as a place that can fill one of those gaps for us in terms of day space available where services can be provided. So Shamika's vision for the Gibbs House is that day center with, with services, with restroom space available, with just a place to come in and sit down and talk to people and be, and not worry about getting trespassed by a, you know, unhappy business owner. And they, they will have a kitchen that'll have, you know, access to, you know, water and snacks and those types of things. So I always make sure I keep in touch with Shamika to make sure that timetable's still holding true. Jeff, did she give you any insight into the Gibbs House?
I have hardly been able to get her to talk to me in the last week, so she's been, been really busy with some other things. And, but I'll find out. I'll check that, that for you. And for that matter also, anybody that wants to come by and look at the facilities or talk to some of our folks with me, give me a call, and I'll be happy to take you over there. And we'll just sit down, and we'll have some kind of discussion about everything that's, that's in planning stage and, and that's, that's happening. I think you'd be surprised to see it, it's quiet. And how we do, I don't think people really understand how much activity is really going on. When you're looking from the outside, everything seems really quiet. It's extremely busy.
Oh, I understand that we have, I mean, we have many, many entities in Norman and in Cleveland County as well that are trying to attend to
Yeah.
all of these needs. I, I totally understand that. I'm just trying to figure out how it actually works in the here and now. So the Gibbs House is a service available for adults and children?
I don't think, children, I think it's, it's primarily focused on our homeless population.
Okay.
And the ability to have them drop in and, and gain access to services and be given service opportunities right there at the door.
And the one, I have one more question, and that, it goes back to the potential of having a dispatcher that I guess would be dedicated to the 988 calls in the EOC? Is that how we're thinking about that?
Yeah.
Okay. And the, but the call center, from the last time we met, I was unclear, really, after I thought about it, is the call center at a state, a centralized location for the state, or is that going to be decentralized somehow? Or do you know yet?
Well, we're going to need to wait until we get responses for the RFP. And I have to be really careful.
Okay.
I have to be really careful on how I, I talk about that because I don't want to do anything.
Sure.
But I, you know, there are, we'll see what the responses are going to be as they come in. I will say, I've shared with Darrell before some pieces, the SAMSA Plan and, and what this looks like, and some of the different pieces are out there. And when the RFP comes out, it'll be, it'll give a lot more guidance on that, but just some things to, to look at and to, to kind of be up to speed on. And one thing, since you brought her name up, I need to brag on her for just a minute. Shamika Williams, who I keep, she is here in Norman. I'm trying, she lives in Opemokee, and she comes back and forth over here. I'm trying to get her to move to, to Norman. She's in her, in her position there. But Shamika is the person who created youth mobile prices in this state. This is a vision. She's been talking about it for years, and she made it happen. I really don't know how she made it happen. She's a tremendous resource, and we need to take advantage of her while she's here.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lynn.
My apologies. I did walk in a little bit late. If you've covered something I'm going to ask. On the transportation, you said that your transportation is outside thirty miles?
What happens is that it works, it's within thirty miles, law enforcement is still the, the primary transport. Outside thirty miles, the third party is, is transporting. And there's probably some different configurations around.
So if third party brings somebody from one of the mental health facilities here in Norman, on that transportation, are they going to be able to provide them transportation back once they're discharged?
Right, yeah. Law enforcement's not going out and, and doing that.
But, because right now, I know that's
That's an issue. That's an issue, yeah. This, and that's part of where all this came from. We've been talking about it for years, and law enforcement's such a tremendous partner with us. This has been a, a topic of discussion for a long time in trying to get this thing to, to work out the way it's going to be. And that is definitely one of the things that we've known about.
But that, that's on the table. Is taking them back from whence they came?
Yeah, you're, Norman, if they're out in Woodward, third party takes them there. Norman's not going to need to drive out to Woodward to get them.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's my only question.
Councilmember Studley.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, were you asking if they are transported here, then will they be transported back from where they came? Is, I think that's what you were asking?
If they're coming to the crisis center at Red Rock?
If somebody's brought here
If somebody, it's, works the same way as, as anything else. They're going back, they're, they're transported here and they're transported, have transport back.
So once they complete their, their mental health evaluation?
If somebody comes here from Tulsa, the transport goes the same way. And there, there are a lot of pieces that, that go into all this. I know that's an issue that's come up before with understanding or talking about, well, if people come here, they end up staying in, in the community and all, if they've come to Griffin and, and how it is. People end up going back. And this is another issue that can probably be better if I brought in probably Duran Crosby, who's met, we brought over one of, one of the folks who can really talk about that. Understand, too, individuals have a, have a right to live where people want to live. And there are a lot of people, I heard this the other day when somebody was talking about, and it absolutely makes sense. There are some people that choose to, they want to live in Norman or Oklahoma City or Tulsa, because you have resources here. And that's where the population goes, is to, to where there are resources and where you can access it. Because if you're living somewhere in far southwest Oklahoma, you don't have, have as much access to, to, to resources. But I think what you're talking about is what I was talking about.
So if I'm from Ada, I'm brought here, I'm done with my hospital stay, somebody's kind of going to come get me from the hospital and transport me back to Ada?
Third party is able to come get you and transport you back. I don't know what happened, so I'm not the right one to talk to. Let's say somebody says, okay, I'm finished with my hospital stay, but I don't want to go back to where I'm at. I want to live somewhere else where we have resources.
I mean, yeah, that's their prerogative.
That's their prerogative.
But a lot of the things that I am hearing just on the street is that I didn't have a way to get back home.
Yeah, and I've heard that too, but I haven't seen it. When I started asking questions about it, it doesn't really come out that way.
That's, that's the only thing I've mostly heard. I haven't ever heard that other police departments are bringing them here whenever I'm asking on the street, but I have heard that they've been brought here to other facilities.
So they might, might have been here.
And haven't been able to get home.
But it's, it's worth, it is something we can talk about, and we'll get you a better answer for it.
Okay. My other question, and I, I get it that you guys have a great relationship with the police, and that's wonderful, but some of people in mental health crisis may not feel that way. And so if I have a family member that is in a mental health crisis and I don't want to contact the police, am I able to contact a facility directly and personally transport my own family member if I have private insurance?
So you would be able to take somebody, let's say somebody's in a crisis situation, you have a crisis center that you could take them to. How Red Rock works, I'm not as familiar, but let's say, I'm real familiar with the Oklahoma County Crisis Intervention Center, because it's one of our facilities. You can actually walk in, and you're going to go in, and we have an urgent care there also. So a lot of these situations end up being situations that you can take care of. You don't need to be admitted into a bed someplace.
Hospitalized, yeah.
Now, there are beds there for people who, who need to go in there. And remember, crisis care is just, it's like an emergency room. You're just stabilizing the situation, and then you
Right.
transport back out to whatever the next level of care is, or home. The urgent care is twenty-three hours, basically, and it's, it's interesting to see. The first time I ever saw one, it's like, why haven't we been doing this all the time? And it's basically little cubby holes. You have a TV up here. Lighting is, is a certain way. You have some You have some medical equipment there and it's a recliner. And somebody comes in, you make sure they're fed the first thing because that's a huge issue. Let's get you hydrated, let's get you fed, let's get you talking to people. And a lot of times within those 23 hours, people stabilize.
Is that facility you're talking about on Griffin campus or?
There is one on Griffin. There's a crisis center on Griffin that's operated by Red Rock that's not operated by us. Okay, the only reason I say I'm not going to say exactly what Red Rock's like is because I don't go in there that often. But I've been into Oklahoma County Crisis many times because it's our facility and that's how that works. And you can transport up to Oklahoma County, very comfortable facility. Red Rock here does not have urgent care beds. That facility up there has urgent care beds.
So currently, family members can take their own family if they choose to, if they're in a crisis? Okay.
Yeah, you can walk into all of our facilities. And if somebody's in, you know, and I think people don't necessarily understand that either. It's better to wait before you get in crisis, try to get engaged before you get in crisis. But you can walk in the door out here at Central Oklahoma. You don't have to have an appointment. It's great if you do, but walk in the door and they're going to start you through the process. And everything starts with an assessment, right? And then from there, we can determine where people go. And the nice thing that's really throughout the system also is we have really upped our use of peers. So hiring people with lived experience who are then able to help somebody navigate through the system a little bit more. It's scary when you walk into this and you don't know what to understand, what's going on. It's nice to talk to somebody and if you have a diagnosis and it's like, what, what is this? What does this look like? And you're able to talk to somebody with, who has experienced the same thing, really understand what you're going through. Makes it easier to get through that system.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Hall. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Dismus, thank you for the update and I hope you'll come back as it continues to evolve. It's clearly a topic we're passionate about.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Josh.
Thank you, sir. All right, now onto item number two. We have Chief Foster, who will be giving us a presentation on the reorganization of the Norman Police Department.
Hey, Chief. Thank you for having us.
Oh, I didn't even see. I'm sorry. So I was like, oh, Chief's going to do it, that's nice.
The transporter's working today.
Captain Clement, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, this is our old organizational chart. And over on the right-hand side, under Operations Bureau, you see Uniform Support Division. We're moving that division out and moving it over with Personnel and Training and the Planning Logistics Area. And that's a different, that will be a separate bureau. You'll also see a few changes in Animal Welfare over here. And we're going to continue to work on Animal Welfare as we move forward. This is the new organizational chart. So you see that the Uniform Support was moved over under the Community and Staff Services Bureau. And it's the Community Outreach Division. And that's current staffing right there, except that the Community Outreach Section has one person in it. Because we've moved everybody to patrol to just answer priority calls. We just don't have enough people in patrol to answer the calls. Also, all of our Traffic Division officers there, the four there, that's also moved to patrol. So those are all empty. We do have the SROs and that's a great deal. We're, I'm trying to look at what the calls for service was to schools before we started there and what it is now comparably. So we can see how we're comparing to how we're working. I think that more people is open to talking to us at the schools, which is a great benefit to us and to the school system and our community on working together. So this Community Outreach Division, our hope is that as we staff back up and we have these new academies, we can get that restaffed and going again. The other thing we would hope is with the Department of Mental Health taking over on the transports and different things that they're doing, that we could get our nine positions back. It would go under this Community Outreach Division or the majority of those will probably go under the Community Outreach Division. And work with the community, going out to the community, working with them, one, to identify problems. We can take our statistics and our numbers and things with us, but identify what they feel it's a problems. And then work with them on how to eat the community on how to address those problems. So we're not coming in heavy and having what I call like a collateral damage in a neighborhood where we're stopping a lot of people that may live in that neighborhood and things. We want them to be aware of what we're going to be doing and how we're going to be doing it. But those extra bodies would address problems in neighborhoods and in communities, business communities and different places. That's sort of the restructure of it. I'm going to let Captain Clement, she will be, she's over that division.
Chief, a quick question. One of the things that we've been talking about to try to increase our coverage and perhaps increase overlap in some of our shifts to keep overtime to a minimum and keep as many available officers to respond on the street as possible is moving to a 12-hour shift. Which divisions primarily would operate under a 12-hour shift in that scenario?
12-hour shift would primarily be patrol, but we could, we could operate under a 12-hour shift for most people. But obviously like your SROs, certain divisions would not. Investigations probably would not. Your primary one would be the patrol division, which would be good to spread them out if we could have more overlap. And 12-hour shifts is a little more efficient than 10s because you're covering 24 with 24 hours.
Do you still stay five and two with 12-hour shifts?
No, we've got like four and three, something like that.
Do you foresee when we get the positions to the new division, the recruitment being any different, given it's a different kind of mission?
Recruitment is just tough.
Just interesting thoughts. In conversations with several Metro Chiefs talking about recruitment and academies and that kind of thing, just fascinating to listen and learn the different skill sets younger recruit. And I say younger, they're the same age they've always been as recruits, but now I'm older, so they look younger. But the 22, 23, 24-year-old skill set coming to the academy these days is much different than the skill set of that age group 10 or 20 years ago. Some of the things they do much better than recruits did years ago. Some of the things they've never been exposed to because their upbringing was much different. They're exposed to all kinds of technology these days that they weren't, you know, 20 years ago. And listening to the chiefs talk about where they're seeing absolute stellar performances, things like CIT training fit far more naturally with young recruits than it may have just seemed out of sort a generation ago. But they're showing up at the academy just far more willing to receive and accept and employ that type of training. And it was just interesting to learn how applicants have evolved over time. And we just look at, you know, I think our, a lot of our students in school are far more advanced than, you know, I was when I was that same age in school. So they're recognizing that.
Gen Z is the most diverse generation yet and will continue to be more diverse, so, okay, just curious.
Yeah, it's tough. It's just tough recruiting all over and that's for all agencies. And it's tough to recruit against the metro area. Not just on the pay when they get there, but just, I don't know if you've seen Oklahoma City just opened up where they're giving $5,500 signing bonus. And it's just tough to compete. People know us and they know us as a great agency and that's why I think we pull people here. But that's not going to work for forever. I'll move on, let Captain Clement sort of talk about some numbers.
All right, so I don't think it's a mystery to anybody at this table that we have had some challenging times in the city of Norman and at the police department. Between COVID and staffing challenges, we've had a pretty significant reduction in our proactive policing. And so I pulled some numbers to see kind of what the result of some of that might be. And so you can see here that our Part One crimes have increased by 11%. Part One crimes are crimes against people and are major felonies.
What is your time period here, sorry?
This is over the course of this last year until September of this year.
So just 2021?
Yeah, yes.
In comparison to 2022? I mean, 2020, sorry.
Correct, yes. Aggravated assaults have increased by 19%. This is our crimes against people. This is crimes or assaults with weapons, like shootings, stabbings, things like that. Our larcenies have increased by 11% and our stolen cars have increased by 50%.
And there have been nationwide trends in an increase in crime, correct?
Yes, yes, it's not just here. We're not, we're not alone in this.
Councilwoman Holland.
Yeah, the stolen cars one and the larceny ones have been an interest in the weekly report. Just noticing that a lot of the car thefts and break-ins in cars happen in seemingly nice neighborhoods too. All throughout the whole city. And it's just kind of an interesting trend that we, cars being left unlocked, whatever it may be. But even in neighborhoods that have a lot of police officers that live in them and have patrol cars parked in driveways. We've seen, one of the officers lives in, my word, told me he came out one morning and there was a beer can sitting on his light bar on his patrol car. So it was just like, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's been two that have been pretty, I don't know, just stand out to me every week as being.
Yeah.
Like what do you do when you?
Right, and our guys.
They don't seem to be deterred by even police cars.
Exactly. They go full, full steam ahead. And just in the last 70, three or four days, we've had a large commercial burglary, which we got recovered the property, suspect vehicle. We've had two sexual or three sexual assaults now. We had an 82 that involved an 80, I'm sorry. We had an injury accident that involved a drunk driver and he was trapped. His legs were under the car. We got him out and got him to the hospital. We had an attempted kidnapping, two or three child abuse. And I mean, these are child abuse where a one-month-old has several broken ribs and a broken clavicle. And investigations, you know, we had a shooting that was investigating with a guy shot in the head. Still looking into that. But there's a lot of serious things that happen that you probably don't hear a lot about that these guys address and they recover. Recovered on stolen vehicles, they recovered three in apartment complex and we serve a warrant on a apartment we think the suspect is in today. So these guys do a tremendous job for the pressures they are on, under for our community, going out every day and continuing to do the job.
And Chief, we have had, and it was a couple of interesting auto theft stories where the suspects were from Oklahoma City and came in with potentially a shopping list of vehicles they were on the lookout for. And the pursuit led them back to the big city. So they were coming in here just doing some shopping and hoping to head back home.
Councilmember Hall. I want to ask this before we get too much farther into it. If you could go back to the reorganization chart and the difference between, I mean, I understand the difference between authorized commissioned officers and authorized civilians. And so in particular, I'm just going to use this as an example, under the Community Outreach Division, when you said traffic and parking, that every, the civilians and commissioned officers are all being moved over to patrol?
Traffic was moved over. The four commissioned officers that's there under traffic, they're in patrol now.
Okay, what happens to the civilians that also are working in traffic and parking?
They're working parking.
Okay, so they're staying there?
Yeah, now. And we do use some of them to do some jobs that we can get them to do as parking officers on helping, like helping on a storm damage. They help us document that rather than pulling an officer out because that just keeps them on the street. So I'll have our other professional staff do those type of things. When they can help with those, they can help us out.
So generally speaking, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So generally speaking, the positions in blue that are civilians, are they staying where they're located in this organization chart? Or are they being moved around too?
They're pretty much staying where they're at.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanted to understand. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Holman.
And I know homicide has been kind of on the rise nationwide from maybe historic lows. But I don't know that we've seen, I can't recall any in recent months in Norman.
We've seen a definite jump, pretty good.
I mean, we don't usually have maybe one or two a year, but.
Right, when you're talking about homicides here in Norman, you're talking like the lower single-digit numbers. So when you have a year when you have nine or 11, well, that's tremendous. And it looks like a tremendous increase, you know, 300, 400% or whatever. So small increases in numbers here can make it look even worse if you're looking at percentages. When you actually look at the numbers, it's just a few more for us.
I remember in, I think, 2016 or 17, we had seven or eight. It seemed like a, there was a double on the side that year. It seemed like a really.
Big jump when you see a percentage increase.
And we do have a very good track record in terms of identifying suspects and bringing people to prosecution on the homicides. We don't have a whole lot of open cases in that arena.
All right, vehicle accidents. So when you look at what's the greatest social harm in Norman, it's going to be your traffic accidents. When you look at damage to property and damage to people, that's the worst thing we got going on here in Norman. 2020 was our deadliest year for fatality accidents. So this is some of the, some of the results of just the difficulty with being proactive over the past couple of years. And these things kind of compound on themselves and build as we've seen. So as you saw from the organizational chart, that there are a lot of moving parts to this Community Outreach Unit. I'm going to talk about the proactive pieces because that's what's going to attack what I just talked about, these statistics that we were, that I just shared with you. So our traffic unit, like the chief mentioned, we had one before, it's been disbanded. As we get people and we stand this unit back up, it's going to look a little bit different. It's going to have three main pieces to it. It's going to have a educational piece and a really significant social media presence as well as enforcement. Enforcement, of course, is always going to be the foundation of this unit. It is very easy to show statistical information that enforcing our traffic laws saves lives. And so that's going to be a piece of that unit. The other piece will be a proactive unit. This is the part the chief was talking about, where we're working with the community to identify and solve problems. It's going to be intelligence-based. We direct our resources towards the few that are committing our serial-type crimes. This is what he's talking about, about not hitting some of that collateral damage where you're just stopping every car that moves. It's very focused on intelligence and getting good information on who exactly these people are and following up and prosecuting them for those crimes. This unit will not be responding to calls for service. It's a problem-solving unit that's going out project-based, based upon the needs of the community.
So like on the traffic unit, once you've got education and enforcement in there, the three Es of enforcement and reducing accidents is the education, enforcement and engineering. So we regularly work with Public Works to address any engineering issues and use our, you know, we send them data that we collect on accidents and different things like that. So the engineering part comes in through Public Works.
All right, so we've mentioned, we've talked a little bit about this already this evening and I think it would be remiss if we didn't talk about some of the challenges that we're having with our increase in our homeless population. If you just take a look at these numbers from 2018, started with just over about 500 contacts with homeless citizens here in Norman. This year, we're over 1,600 and we're not done with, we're not done with the year yet. So a pretty significant increase in the amount of time that we're spending responding to these type of calls here at the police department. So I think it's important to sit.
Councilwoman Foreman.
On the last slide, are any of those numbers like duplicates, like the same people that you know?
That could be duplicates. And the way we poll this, I mean, we could have more than that. I'm positive we do. The way we polled this was just looking for a key word on homeless.
Calls of service?
Yeah, so.
If the officer mentioned homeless in the contact, that's how we got these numbers. So if the officer didn't mention that, then that would be something that would miss in those numbers.
Councilwoman Peacock.
Real quick, is there any correlation to time of year and these numbers here? I mean, I'm trying to look for a pattern. I'm not seeing, it kind of looks like around the later winter months, they get a little, well, each year is a little different, so.
Closing of camps is the correlation to the numbers without providing adequate housing, just saying.
I think what you see is as you approach holidays and things where people's more out, you have more people out doing things and they become a little fearful of things, some criminal activity. So you start to get more calls around that time.
I appreciate that. Good, I appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, so I think it's important that, um, we say it out loud in public in front of lots of people, that it is not a crime to be homeless or mentally ill. That has been our philosophy here at the police, police department for the, at least the two decades that I've worked here and it will continue to be that. So I will repeat that again. Um, I do think it's also important that, um, there is a criminal element that is moving through our homeless population. Um, uh, Councilmember Hall and I have had a multitude of conversations about, um, what I call our traditional homeless here in Norman. That some of them are interested in services and some of them are not. Um, uh, we don't typically have a, a large problem with those folks and they move in and out of services. That's not what we're seeing right now and we're seeing a criminal element that is, that is moving through the homeless population. That is victimizing the homeless population, that is driving these extra contacts. And is also driving some of our numbers in terms of like our aggravated assaults. We've seen an increase in that within our, um, our homeless population as well.
Captain, um, just, and I don't know how, how you guys hear it on the PD side, but through dispatch. We've also responded to a number of fires, uh, in encampments. And it, it's starting to look like they're increasing warming fire activity and some of those fires have gotten away from some folks. And, uh, so FIRE has responded, uh, more frequently in the last two weeks to, uh, fires in camps.
And the, the traditional homeless that we know several of and have worked with for a while, they're even identifying this to us. Of saying, hey, these people are here, we don't want them here. And, uh, so it's good that we have the communication with some in, uh, the homeless community that will talk to us and tell us about people that are doing things that we can address criminal activity. And per unit will even more emphasize addressing those issues.
Absolutely. So the focus is on criminal behavior. Again, this is not about a, a housing status or anything like that. It is focusing on criminal behavior and people that are, are victimizing all kinds of people within our community. I will also be working with businesses to address, um, safety and quality of, of life issues. I don't think a day goes by, um, that I don't get an email about, from a business that they're concerned about their employees going to work and not feeling safe. And so a piece of this, uh, part of what we'll be doing as well is working with our businesses with that.
All right.
That's it.
Well, I'll be the first to say, and I've said it before, this is my third time seeing this presentation, that I, I sincerely appreciate this action on behalf of the Norman Police Department. And as we touched on, it's been no secret, there's been some, some tension, if you will, uh, between the city council wanting to see changes. And then now we are seeing them, which is very refreshing. And, uh, I'm excited to work with the police department to see these changes come to life because I do think our community needs it and our community is ready for it. So I just want to start off by saying thank you for listening to residents, it's very much appreciated. Councilmember Hallman?
Yeah, I share that same sentiment, I really appreciate both of you. Um, and your assessment or comments about the, I don't know what you might refer to as the base or the original Norman homeless folks, I'm not sure. That's exactly been my experience growing up here is that I've never known of many issues with our homeless population when it comes to crime. I mean, at the most, you might, uh, you know, a bike might get stolen, you know, over the years. But growing up here, overall, it, it's been a quiet population that is kind of stained, stayed hidden to the, for the most part, really. And only in the last couple of years have we seen kind of an influx in some of these folks that you mentioned that have, you know, don't have good intentions and are coming in here. And one of the comments that was mentioned a few years ago by, I can't remember which, which officer mentioned it to me, but, you know, they were talking about how, you know, it's, the homeless population in Norman and other places are much more likely to be victims of crime than they are to commit it. Because, uh, you know, folks would think that they're not going to report the crime if it happens to them. It's an easy victim, an easy target and, and, uh, you know, I always, I've definitely always believed that, that they're more likely to be a victim of crime than committed. But that we do have some of these bad actors coming in that are, you know, really causing a problem that we've got to address. So I re, I do really appreciate this, I think this is very helpful.
Okay, Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to present this to us tonight because we've, you know, been aware that there, that this has been going on. And, and I've had some exposure to bits and pieces of it, but it's nice to see the, uh, big picture. And I just want to personally thank, uh, Captain Clement for the time that she's been willing to invest, um, not only with me, but also with our Lindsay Street businesses and our downtown businesses. Um, she's been, uh, very responsive in trying to, you know, address some of the concerns that you mentioned. And, um, has been very helpful in reaching out to you business owners, so, okay, thank you for that.
Councilmember Lynn?
All right, Chief, I'm going to put you on the spot. First of all, I appreciate you, but I want you, this, I want you to take this opportunity, the people at this table, people that might be listening. What do you need from people sitting at this table to be successful, to get to where you need to be, to make things happen, to make this the best and safest city that you know how?
Here, uh, on the council, I would ask that we add our nine positions back. We've got the mental health response going, we've got a reorganization going. And it's like I said in the, in the presentation on the organizational chart, that was with current staffing that's on there. We want to add some of the nine positions back to her response unit that would, uh, be more proactive in some of the areas in our community. To help address these problems and do it, uh, more precisely. Uh, old ways and old ways throughout a lot of departments is we just roll in with a lot of units, we stop a lot of people. And yeah, we'll, we'll come across somebody that's one of the bad guys, but we stop a lot of people that, uh, are just neighborhood people. And yeah, they might've been driving, speeding, doing whatever, uh, but we want to more precisely address the criminal element. So for you all, I would ask for those nine positions back.
Thank you, Councilmember Foreman?
Uh, Mr. Francisco, so we have a P S S T to increase potential one day, hopefully, that sort of thing. Would we be able to do an increase, Mr. City Manager, also, um, in the P S S T? Would that be something that would help provide funding to refund those positions?
An increase in the rate?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, a couple of thoughts as it relates to P S S T. We, we are running towards the tail end of a debt issuance that was done early on after the adoption of P S S T. So we could finance upfront a fifteen million dollar communication system, uh, and two fire stations and, and some big pieces of equipment.
It was more the E L C building and the, and the communication system.
So the debt service, I think we will have paid in full by twenty twenty.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Now, right now, the reason we have been operating on a deficit in P S S T is primarily based on that debt service payment. Which is about one, no, two point, about two million dollars. The subsidy from the general fund to the P S S T fund is less than that, but as soon as the debt service is paid off, we won't be operating in a deficit and everything on that P S S T list. You know, all the positions can be afforded at that point. When we talk about, um, positions, um, thank goodness, the state of Oklahoma stepped up with the checkbook, you know, and which was desperately needed. And I've been having wonderful conversations with so many agencies that recognize, they all saw what we saw, that there was a huge need. And everybody kind of felt like, yes, that, that should be a responsibility of the state, but it wasn't. It was falling on, uh, other folks probably less capable of responding. The ability to add positions is so slow in the police department, just primarily because the, the academy process and, and the lengthy application window and then background checks and everything. That we, the earliest we would be able to add bodies is next fiscal year. We, we, if we started an academy in February, by the time we have bodies available to put on the street and fill, um, the captain's division, it's July of twenty twenty-two. About the same time we go live with nine-eight-eight.
Pretty sure the chief would like something before twenty-seven.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe, I don't know. But maybe, I, I hope P S S T is still on the table.
Always.
It better be.
All we need is some more election days, darn it.
Hook it on February, I'll take, I'll take it.
Councilor Peacock?
Uh, do we know what the average salary of those nine positions would be offhand and ballpark?
Eight hundred sixty-five thousand.
Pretty close.
You're just looking at an average, you know, they're starting around fifty, low fifties. So the average salary, you know, they're going to be in the fifties starting out when we had them. And most of our force is younger nowadays. And then there's benefits and Mr. Francisco would, uh, have more into that. Because we have matching on the pension and social security, different things like that. Uh, so you know that nine positions was eight hundred and sixty-five thousand roughly.
That's what I'm asking, if that's, that's the number that you need.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Studley?
I'm so sorry.
I just want to remind everyone that those nine positions were vacant prior to twenty twenty. So, um, I would like to say that I, I appreciate you guys doing this presentation for us. I wish that it was done prior to that being announced on social media because many of us got questions. Um, what is this? And none of us had a clue, so I would appreciate if that's something that you could let the rest of council know.
Who's that going to meet for?
I'm sorry, I thought it was the mayor's.
I have a, I have a thing every month and that was just a topic that was offered and I was like, oh, that sounds great.
Gotcha, okay. Um, the other thing I want to talk about is, um, with calls being diverted with nine-eight-eight. Um, as well as some of the stuff that city council is talking about with trying to alleviate you guys having to go out on homeless calls. If we provide our own ban that the city is going to pay for out of the five hundred thousand that we allocated. Um, that would reduce the number of calls that you all are receiving. So I guess if we're reducing the number of calls, why would you need an increase in staff?
I don't think you'll reduce the calls by very much. Like he said, forty calls is what they're getting. I get forty calls in an hour. They're getting forty calls a month. We're not going to reduce our call volume that much by what you respond to. People are still going to be calling the police department because they're afraid. They want us to respond.
And Chief, in the, in the, even in the homeless slide that showed those number of contacts at about sixteen hundred, that's out of a hundred thousand calls for service during the year. So it's still a very small percentage of the total work being done. And we're not, we're not having a positive impact on, uh, the part-one crimes, the assaults, the larcenies, or the auto thefts. We're, we're losing ground in those particular categories. We did, um, get some pricing on some of those vehicles that, uh, Councilmember Studley had described, um, in and around a hundred and sixty thousand for a vehicle that is equipped to address, uh, ADA issues, which would absolutely be mission critical. We recognize we have members in our homeless community that, that deal with mobility issues. So, um, those are readily available and we do see similar, um, acquisitions for paratransit services around the country. So, uh, they're, they're not, they're not difficult to spec out or acquire. So that is a thing that could be acquired with the dollar set aside, uh, by the city council. Uh, operationally, uh, that'd be a great conversation for one of the committees to sit down and say, okay, how, 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 how would we operate, who would operate it? How would they be dispatched, um, et cetera? So, uh, Public Works did, through our fleet, put together some cost estimates in terms of fuel and, uh, maintenance on such a vehicle.
Um, was I, wasn't it ten percent of calls that were either homelessness or mental health crisis? Do you remember?
Ten percent of calls of our, all our calls coming in.
Uh-huh.
So out of that forty an hour, ten, was it ten point eight or ten point nine percent of those, that's the calls coming in. Calls for service is around ninety thousand. Calls coming in is a lot bigger number.
Okay, well, I guess we can just continue to evaluate that as time goes on. Um, but I am curious a little bit more, Officer Clement, I, I do want to commend you guys for what you're doing with homeless outreach. Because I know we're all in a difficult position right now and I appreciate you chatting with, um, Councilmember Hall. And, um, Deputy Chief Ricky Jackson and I have met quite a few times and so I appreciate the open conversation that you guys are having. Um, I couldn't imagine trying to, um, figure out how to, well, I can't imagine, I do it sometimes, how to figure out, do I call the police for this situation? Or who else can I call? So I know that's difficult as a business owner and then as well as an officer because you don't want to crimilize, criminalize homelessness. Um, I'm curious though, because I know that we have talked about, um, Deputy Chief Jackson and I about some of the calls or some of the people that are here. Um, he said that he's being told, or that they're concerned that they're being brought from other police departments and dropped at the borders of our cities. And since he and I have talked, um, myself and other volunteers have reached out in many of the encampments that we go to. I have yet to find one person that said they were dropped at the city's borders. I did have one person tell me they were brought by an officer and taken to their sister's house. Um, and I know he mentioned that you guys were checking that out as well whenever you go on call. So what have you found with that? I'm curious if that's where like the criminal element's coming from or what are you finding?
Um, so we have done our kind of informal polling as well, that sounds like, kind of like what you're doing. And we have, we have got some response that they have been dropped off by police departments here in Norman, um, at random places. Now, what the percentage is, um, I don't know, we're still kind of collecting some of those numbers and tallying all that up. But I have gotten feedback that it's a combination of things. Um, I personally have gone out and talked to people and, and they're from all over the country and they've arrived here in Norman. Um, and I've had officers say that, that yeah, that there are police departments that are dropping them off here. And that they also come here for services and it's a, it's a variety of things.
There was one pretty high-publicized one, a lot of people called in about, that was up at Flood and Robinson. That was saying he just got out of Oakland County and was dropped down here.
Um, Chief, I have a dispatch question on that particular scenario. Um, that was an individual who generated about twenty calls to dispatch in about fifteen minutes.
Oh, wow.
It was, it was morning commute time in and he was at a very busy intersection and his behavior was startling enough where a lot of people called.
Had a Nerf gun.
Yeah, pointing a Nerf gun at traffic and he didn't have Nerf darts, but he was pointing a Nerf gun at traffic. Um, when, when twenty people call in, does, it results in one actual call for service? I just wanted to make sure we're, we're not twenty counting a single.
Yeah, the calls are twenty. That's the calls in and then the call for service is the one.
So, um, of the criminal element that you're seeing, where, because I, I agree with you, a lot of, I'm seeing a lot of new faces. And I don't know if that's because of COVID and so people are just becoming homeless here in the Cleveland County area. Um, and most of them that I talked to are from here or they moved here from some, from somewhere else, but not to be homeless in Norman. It's because they have family or, or something like that that's here. Um, so the criminal side that you're seeing, where, what are you finding out with that? Like where are they from?
Where are they coming from?
Uh-huh.
So a lot of the people that I've, that I've been speaking with are from other states. I've had New Jersey and Louisville, Kentucky, um, all over the place.
Colorado.
And they were brought here to be homeless here in Norman, is what you're saying?
They came here, they were homeless there and they came here, I'm not sure what their plan was, but they.
They didn't have family here.
Yeah, they're, they have no connections here, there's nobody from here.
Is it the services?
That's a, that's a piece of it. And then some of what I'm hearing is that they, the, the way that they're treated by the police here in Norman.
So what's the crim, so the criminal ones are out, are the out-of-state ones is what you're finding?
That, that's some of what I, some of what I'm finding, yes. Some of them are from here. And some of them I, they haven't been asked because, you know, they're involved in a serious aggravated assault and we aren't too interested where they're from. We're trying to sort out why their heads busted in. So, I mean, not everybody were, were willing and trying to find out where they're from, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Councilwoman Hallman?
Uh, you said some come here because of the way that they're, they've heard that they're treated by the police here, like they've heard that our police are nicer than everywhere else or?
Yes.
That's the, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I've, I've often had the, just kind of opinion that if you're homeless and you're thinking, where could I be homeless? In Oklahoma City, Tulsa, Dallas, or Norman, Oklahoma? Norman would by far be the most safe place I would expect, where you're least likely to be harassed or be a victim of homicide or assault. And I guess maybe least likely to be assaulted by the police too, I suppose. That's, I hadn't heard that, that's pretty interesting though. Uh, but like for services, I mean, lots of cities have services, like between here.
Oklahoma City.
Between here and New Jersey, there's tons of Norman Oklahomas and college towns, you know, have services just like we do. So I, it would be, try to figure out why would they come to Norman from Louisville, Kentucky or New Jersey instead of anywhere else they could have gone is.
That's what we want to know.
Yeah, real mystery.
Super fan.
Um, yeah, I'm. Yeah, real mystery. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm very interested in figuring out how to staff this new division for sure. Uh, I know in our recent academy, we had seven graduates, but how many applicants did we have?
Forty-nine.
We had forty-nine. Was it, did we only have seven because it was a matter of pay? If it had been paid?
Oh, no, on that one, for that academy that graduated, we had about eighty-nine, I think, or eighty to ninety. And we started with a dozen. One of those had been through our academy already from OU. So he went straight to field training. So we had eleven in the academy. Two people quit. Two people were terminated. So we ended with seven.
And so would, having an incentive like five thousand dollars or anything, would have that made a difference with those?
No.
We might have got more applicants.
Don't get me wrong. I don't, I don't like an incentive like that. It just hurts us because some people are attracted to that. I would rather pay our people better and go, we'll come here and make that every year, than me giving you five thousand just to come here the first year. Uh, it would be more the way I would like to do it.
So doing that though could result in more applicants, but it might not necessarily result in more, us getting more people graduate.
Right.
Or quality applicants.
Maybe no, no amount of money might, might affect how many we could get through the academy unless we drop our.
Well, we'll get a better pool, hope, you know, it's.
So, I, I mean, I'm interested in this new division for sure. I think this has a lot of potential for positive impact through the community. Um, and I, I agree with you. I hate to get into this like incentive war with other cities that have massive budgets like Oklahoma City and whatnot. But it almost seems like, how do we, they're offering five thousand dollars. How do we, how do we compete with that? If we want to get the best officers out there, I, I think that's what we do want. How do we do that without getting into this, you know, whole back and forth?
Tough everywhere.
I'm, I'm definitely interested in trying to figure this out for sure.
Councilor Hall.
So one, one comment, one question. So the incentive program that, um, Oklahoma City just rolled out, I think it's also important to add that they identified like over twenty different positions. It wasn't just an incentive program for their police department, but they identified the police department and the fire department as, um, having positions that fit their criteria for offering an incentive program. Uh, so that, just a comment to flesh that out a little bit. And I, you know, I'm curious about, um, because I know recruiting is really a challenge, not just here, but across the country for a variety of reasons. So when you have eighty-nine applicants, I'm assuming there's a pretty rigorous screening process, um, to even consider whittling down the pool. But are those eighty-nine applicants, are a lot of them applying in lots of other academies around the metro area?
Yes.
So, um, can you describe a little bit about just that process of starting with that number of applicants and why, um, it was such a challenge to get to the twelve that you landed on?
Yeah.
Which was not, I mean, you were hoping for more as my understanding.
Yeah. And some of them will drop out, like you said, they may get a job somewhere else, go somewhere else. They may decide they don't want to do this after they get into the process and sort of see what it's like. Uh, others will be weeded out as you go because there's some criteria that's required by federal law, some by state law, some by CLEAT, uh, some by the pension system itself, uh, that weed some of those people out. And then the background process, we do a pretty extensive and thorough background on people. Not to the extent you may see in some of the memes that go around about, you know, well, you said you didn't miss anywhere in second grade and we show that you missed a half a day. So, not to that extent, but we're pretty, pretty rigorous because we, we want to get the best people. And as the chief, I don't want somebody coming back on me later going, well, you hired this guy and this happened. You should have known that he's done this and he was this way, or she was this way. I don't want that to happen. So we do a pretty rigorous background investigation and that will weed them down. And then we have interview boards and decide who's the best fit for our department.
So, um, just as a follow-up, compared to, uh, last few academies that you all have done, um, is eighty-nine, is that lower than what you normally, that number of applicants? Is that lower or, you know, how does that fit in?
Over the period of this most recent time, you have around a hundred to a hundred and fifty applicants.
So you're seeing a decrease in your pool?
You've definitely seen a decrease. This, this time for this one will start in February. We've got forty-nine applications.
And is it closed already?
It's closed. That's what we had to start with. And when I applied, we had like six hundred and some applications.
Okay.
It's, it's on a decline.
Okay.
I hate to see what we get next year and what the applicant pool will be, but it's definitely going down.
So what I'm hearing you saying in response to council member Holman is that a one-time incentive would not be the direction you would go. There would be other, other things to consider that you think might be more successful.
I would just consider raising everybody up that's here, to pay, make us more competitive.
That's a really good thing.
We can attract people, be in the department we are and the training we provide. I think we're well-known for it and I think that will attract people if we can be competitive on pay.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Peacock.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, you started to unpack this just a second ago, but, um, I've heard Oklahoma City's down a hundred officers, Edmund's down a forty officer or something. So can you just speak to that a little bit? Basically, this is, doesn't seem like it's a problem unique to Norman. It seems like it's across the state, maybe even across the country.
It's probably across the country.
Okay.
Everybody has trou, trouble recruiting now. And the local agencies, Oklahoma City, I mean, they've got, they're like, they're tremendously down. I mean, I think they're gonna hire a hundred and sixty over the next few years. Uh, Edmund's not that much down. I mean, they only have a hundred, still a hundred officers.
They're starting to pay ridiculous.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are numbers I've heard thrown out there. So I don't know if there's any truth there.
Uh, but Edmund will start in a process probably this next year and do some hiring. Moore is still trying to find, uh, they added five or six positions new, so they're trying to find those people now. So it's just a competitive process and the pool that is applying is getting smaller. So it's just harder to get the best quality people that you want.
Right, right.
And, uh, and keep them.
I think, yeah. To follow up to that, are, are you guys doing anything to actively recruit? Like, you know, in the business world, they have headhunters. They go out there and they find talent and they bring them to you. Is there equivalent to that?
On there, we have a recruiter.
Okay, yeah.
The recruiter is working patrol. So I don't have anybody out there doing that. Now, we real advertise in publications. Uh, we do focus on areas where we think officers are leaving. Uh, so we try to pull people from anywhere we can, uh, but it's just getting tighter and tighter.
Yeah, it sounds like a real dilemma.
Do you advertise with CLEAT at all?
Uh, we let CLEAT know we're opening positions. Uh, I don't think a lot of people know to go there that's not in the.
World.
Business. Yeah, already.
Councilor Studley?
I'm gonna pass because I think my question was.
Councilor Holman.
Yeah, my last question's really about the, uh, accidents, car accidents or traffic accidents. You mentioned twenty twenty being the deadliest, at least several decades. Um, I think a lot of the public would probably have the opposite perception that the technology and we've widened, we've widened tons of streets and highways have been widened and we have all these things and, uh, that maybe that's, that statistic would be going down. And especially with COVID, you might think that there might, there was less traffic so there'd be less accidents. Is there any details you guys have about what might have been causing that?
What caused it? Yeah. It's sort of what Captain Clement got to is with COVID and the things that are happening, the enforcement went down. And I think you can see a direct correlation on when you are issuing more citations for traffic violations, your accidents correspondingly go down during that time even of a year. Like, if we go up in October, November, you'll see accidents sort of dip down. And, um, and you'll see that across the nation really. The more enforcement there is, the more compliance you have with the law and there's just not as many accidents. Well, you do see a lot more distraction because of the cell phones coming in and people trying to drive with them and text and everything else.
Badly.
Uh, that does cause a lot of them because distracted driving is definitely a high cause on it.
Well, I've noticed even, uh, nationwide officer-involved traffic accidents are up twenty-five percent this year from last year. And, uh, and it's right on par with gunfire incidents. So it's, it's a, I agree, an interesting and troubling trend because we think we're building safer roads, we're building things, we've got technology helping us drive cars better, but.
Yeah. And you got it right on, on the officer, you know, responding. And yeah, there's more accidents because there's a rise in things they're responding to fast. So, yeah, you pick that out.
Um, I mean, one, uh, closing comment on our part. Councilmember Studley asked a question that just rang of a wonderful educational opportunity. When family members recognize a member in crisis, the ability to take them to walk-in facilities, and I think our ability to share with everyone in the community, these addresses, these are the services available at these addresses. And as per Mr. Dismuks, um, where they have those, uh, crisis beds immediately available, I think we're gonna talk to Mrs. Vrska about putting together a video and be able to post that to multiple websites to be able to say, here's, here's a great way to do it. And don't necessarily wait until a full-blown crisis, but here's where you can get services for behavioral health issues for adults, for children. I think it's a great opportunity to share that information.
I think that's people.
Do you want to star in one? We can.
People, particularly with, uh, an inability of pay, if you've got insurance, like you sort of mentioned the insurance side of it, they can go to hospital and they have psychiatric treatment at hospitals. Uh, it's for those that don't have that ability, they can just walk in out there. And we would take people, when we talk to them and we can see they're having issues, we'll just ask them, well, do you want a ride? Do you want to self-admit? Do you want to go talk to somebody? And we'll take them out there at times just to give them a ride to, uh, get the help they need.
What if the answer's no?
I can't, then it's no. I mean, they're having issues, but it's not to the point that we would take them into custody. They're not a threat to themselves or somebody else. So.
They're at a hospital, you would need like a doctor to sign off.
No, I know. But I think that is really where, I think it's a small percentage of people that, that we see in our community. But to me, that is the most challenging part is when you clearly recognize that a person needs assistance and could benefit from some help, they say no. And that's where I think we're stuck because the standard is so high from my understanding for an involuntary type of intervention. Um, and that's where your hands seem to really be tied, as well as other partners.
Yes, that's the problem. You've got a lot of people out here that needs treatment, be it for mental health or substance abuse. And unless they're forced to go somewhere for treatment, either us taking them or through a court order or a court program like Drug Court, and you've had the presentation on how successful that is, they don't and they won't stay unless they have to do it. And that treatment is good for them because the results from Drug Court itself shows you how good it works when they'll go get the help that they need.
Councilor Studley.
I remembered what I was gonna say. Um, and I just want to say this on record. I had asked, um, city manager Pyle about this before we started, but I just kind of want to get this on record. I know with the increase of the calls from businesses, um, some of the things that we have talked about is, um, I know Food and Shelter has a day center and people can go there, but some people are banned from there for various reasons, or some people just don't want to go there because maybe there's other people that are there that they don't want to hang out with because, let's face it, not everyone gets along in the homeless community, just like we don't in, in our regular community. So, uh, with that being said, we have discussed the possibility of opening up the warming shelter to twenty-four hours. Um, I'm not sure where Mr. Pyle is at in that process, but if we had a second center where we could kind of take care of some of the stragglers that are out amongst the businesses or back in that alley where they can get into trouble, uh, if they're in a, a place where we can observe and make sure that they're not doing anything wrong or being on private property or somebody else's business, do you guys think that would help you and to reduce some of those calls on specifically Main Street?
I think if you had a center that they are willing to go to, it might. And at this center, you have treatment or help available, access to what they need, then those people that are really looking for something, they could get it at that center. And it would be a centralized location for them to go to. It could help.
I'm just saying in regards to like some of the people that are at the warming shelter, releasing them at seven AM and they don't want to go to Food and Shelter and they can't get back in until seven PM. Um, so they're wandering around. And I know one of those businesses that you're getting calls at all the time is right there. So, um, if they weren't out at seven AM to sit on her stoop and trash it out, because I know, um, some volunteers go over there and pick up at night.
It would help that. Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, council member, we're talking to our security contractor to see if they can staff up to provide us the twenty-four, seven coverage. Um, and we do recognize the opportunity for us to fill the gap between now and once again, the state of Oklahoma, providing that exact same model at Gibbs House just up the street. We think if we can get through Gibbs House opening, we can save a lot of people a lot of grief. So we're working on that as we speak.
Hear that business owners. Thank you.
Councilor Holman?
Hopefully the last question so we can all go home. Um, Chief, you talked about the more reinforced traffic laws, the less accidents and things that you have. Do you think that, and I know no officer wants to sit on a post, but if you had someone on post around in the mornings, seven AM, if you had maybe more, um, visibility, do you think that would hurt, like help curb the issues that the businesses are having? If you had more patrol in that area around seven?
Yes. I mean, if you have more people that can be visible in there, uh, a lot of people probably wouldn't hang out if an officer's hanging out there. It's just that we don't have the people. I don't have the people to work traffic or do, you know, things that would reduce other social harms that injure people and property. It's just the numbers, right? That's what it is.
Sorry.
Councilor Hall.
So how many positions do you need to fill? Is it just nine?
We're down nine right now. What I'm asking for is I'm trying to hire those nine right now to start an academy. What I'm asking for is the nine positions that we lost in twenty twenty to come back. And that would get us at least, where we said a hundred and eighty authorized. I'd really like to get up closer to the hundred and ninety that we, a hundred and eighty-nine is what we'd be at with the PST positions added to the hundred and thirty-five that we had in two thousand eight, being paid out of the general fund before PST came into existence. If you add the PST positions to that, all of them, you'd be at a hundred and eighty-nine, which will be around where we need to be and move it in the right direction. I think ultimately you're, you'd be at two hundred, two oh five.
So you're fully staffed except for nine?
Yes, right now.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no other questions, thank you for your time. A reminder to you all, Monday, National Night Out.
Yes.
At the mall.
It looks like the weather is holding in the forecast.
I want a helicopter ride.
There'll be a bunch of them there.
I know.